I call to order the Waverly City Council for June 22, 2015. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
With approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. And that's our adopted... So at this point, we have called to order A, approval of the agenda, B, you wanted C...
C would be public comments.
Public comments.
And then...
And then D would be study session.
And then everything else falls.
All right. Back to the original approval of the amended agenda, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. And that's our adopted... So at this point, we have called to order A, approval of the agenda, B, you wanted C...
C would be public comments.
Public comments.
And then...
And then D would be study session.
And then everything else falls.
And then everything else falls. All right. Back to the original approval of the amended agenda, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no. We proceed. We will invite at this point any public comments on any agenda items, period. It's wide open.
Dwayne Little, Waverly. As of now, it's been a year since I brought to attention the council the area of sod that runs through the concrete swale at the rugby playing field and from 24th Street over to 20th Street. That's been in there, it's... The sod is about this high, probably about a foot or 10 inches to a foot high. It covers almost the full width of the swale out there. On the west side of the 24th Street, there's a solid stream of water in that swale. So I'm assuming it's just flowing out into the grass on either side because there's no other place for it to go. So bringing that back up, second thing is when you get to the discussion about urban revitalization, I think whatever it is it's called about the urban renewal type thing, will there be public comments in that section or will the public be able to speak at that section?
I think speak now maybe would be the best. So you may speak on that.
Okay. I'm really concerned about that because that allows the use of eminent domain for economic purposes and that from what I can read would allow similar things to the Kelo versus New London, Connecticut decision that was decided about 10 years ago. And that is a threat to personal liberties and the right of public-owned or private-owned property because the public could take it at will.
Yeah.
And a corporation could take it at will.
We will definitely...
Anybody can incorporate in about a day for $100.
Yeah.
We'll definitely try to address that one. On the rugby area dip, any comments on that one?
No change from last Monday.
Okay. It will still be watched by somebody, I'm sure. Any other public comments? Yes. Karen Thalicker.
Good evening, my name is Karen Thalicker and I sent a letter to Phil and the members of the council in June about putting a no right turn on red sign at the corner of Bremer Avenue and First Street. I guess the no right turn on red would be on the southeast side but the... It would prevent people from taking a right onto Bremer Avenue from First Street northeast. Okay? And as many of you know, I was struck by a car there in April and the driver in that situation, a very nice gentleman, was attempting to make a right turn on red and was looking left because he didn't want to get hit by the traffic that was coming on Bremer Avenue and failed to see me lawfully in the crosswalk. Since that time, I've had, I said in my letter to you, I've had several people, but actually, I mean, it's been, I've probably had 20 people come up to me and talk to me about their near misses at that intersection. There was one quite recently where the person said that if her dog had been on the other side of her, the dog would have been killed. And I talked to one person who was the driver in a situation where she came so close to hitting a pedestrian at that spot that she actually stopped and apologized to the pedestrian. As I said in my letter, I believe there are several problems with that intersection. Because of the buildings, it's difficult to see walkers, bicyclists, joggers who are traveling east across the bridge, past the Big Six and then into the crosswalk. The white line that the drivers are supposed to stop behind at that crosswalk is far enough behind that they can't see sufficiently out onto Bremer Avenue to gauge whether or not they can make a safe right turn on red without getting hit by that cross traffic. And as a result, drivers will, even if they stop where they're supposed to, will inch forward and inch forward and go into the crosswalk as they attempt to look left, as they're looking left for their right turn on red. And just as a way to kind of prove to you that this was happening this way, Anilia and I from, Anelia from the paper and I, we went out and filmed 15 cars that were coming through the intersection, just the next 15 that were there on a right turn on red. And not a single one of them executed that right turn on red properly or legally. And I also think just, you know, without saying too much, I mean, there are a lot of city cars that come from the city lot that make that right turn on red. And again, I'm asking you to put a right turn on, no right turn on red sign there in order to protect everybody, but I think it will also protect the city from future lawsuits because there was more than one city vehicle out of those 15 vehicles that we saw there. So again, I am asking for the safety of the pedestrians, of the babies in strollers, of the animals, of everyone that goes across that intersection to please put that no right turn on red sign up there. After, again, after this happened to me and I heard so many comments about it, I just felt like I really needed to do something to prevent this from happening again.
Thank you.
You're gonna stay around for our discussion on, that's one of our items we're gonna talk about, so...
Yeah, I'll stay around for a little while. I've got another meeting here, so I'll stick around for a while, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Plug your next item, right?
Yes.
Other public comments on anything, on the agenda, not on the agenda, anything. Thank you. Study session, number one, is a discussion of no right turn on red sign at First Street Northeast and Bremer Avenue. Bill, is there anything you wanted to weigh in on this before the council weighs in on this?
Not necessarily. I think Mike Cherry might have some insight into traffic engineering, how you, what considerations for putting up a no right turn on red and that kind of concerns. I know there's a complicated corner there because of the, a lot of traffic, there's some yellow paint on the curb that's not very well followed, there's always a lot of vehicles on the side there. There are people that cut inside on the right and take a right turn when there's a turn, when there's somebody waiting at the corner. But I also understand there's a lot of traffic that would not be able to actually turn right and that would really cause some stacking problems in that block, I think, without a right turn on red for that reason. And I guess, the other thing is, just to clarify, if, when you said that 15 cars in a row didn't comply, did they never stop before the white line or did they stop and then move forward to see?
As I recall, there was only one car that stopped before the crosswalk. Other than that, they all stopped in the crosswalk.
So they could see both ways?
Right, that's right. They didn't even stop where they were supposed to. And again, you could, I mean, anybody could do that same experiment and, you know, see what your results would be, but that's what happened and it was the 15, 15 cars.
Okay, let's let everyone weigh in from the staff here. Mr. Cherry?
I'm just gonna add the drawing.
Oh, okay.
You know, so many vehicles have to go through the intersection, you know, that's a given. And so if you put up a no right turn on red, that means legally every vehicle from the north must stop, has no opportunity without breaking the law to make that free right-hand turn. So as Bill indicated, that means that there's gonna be a lot of traffic stacking up and I think that what's gonna end up happening is they're still going to encroach on the crosswalk and you're gonna have people that are now going to probably blatantly violate the no right turn on red or you can wait and see what the level of frustration will be when something like that is put up. So that's basically the extent to which I have to offer to this. If you wanna ask me questions, I'm more than welcome to. I'm sure Chief Purcell as well, city attorney.
Is that something we can simply, we could simply just do? Does the DOT have to approve that because it's turning onto Highway 3 or is it not because it's turning off of a...
I suspect they'll defer to what we want to do because it's, it affects side street traffic as opposed to mainline traffic.
But if we wanted to make no right turn on reds on all of the stoplights, including on Bremer, that would, that would bring them in.
Historically, right turn off of Bremer has, there's only been a couple in town and they were removed about 12 to 15 years ago because we had opened up the site visibility like at the corner of 4th Street. Also, there were some changes to the way the traffic signal functioned like over by the library and how it interacts with pedestrians. So I know the mayor has brought up concern about side street traffic turning onto Bremer and not yielding to pedestrians crossing Bremer Avenue. This will certainly mean that there are more vehicles stacked up on the side street trying to get through the intersection while it is still green because no one will be able to make that free right turn movement. So the way I always look at it, it's kind of like a balloon filled with air representing so many vehicles have to go through the intersection and if you squeeze it down in one area, it's simply gonna push out in another area and in an effort to try to correct one traffic concern, you may generate others.
Do our, the lights that we put in a few years ago down there with the sensors, would that make any difference, the fact that they're triggered by vehicles being there?
Yes, they're receptive to the number of vehicles on the side street, to how long it stays green.
Shouldn't that help modulate that flow a little bit better to indicate that there are cars there to get it turned? I mean...
Right, but it's not helping the pedestrians who are trying to cross Bremer Avenue on a green light and now they've got vehicles on side streets, more vehicles waiting, stacked up, trying to make that right turn. So it's just...
Yeah, I mean, I can see what you're saying there, so if there's more cars stacking up there, that green light is gonna be longer green light, there's gonna be more cars going. And, you know, the one example that you gave, that was my mom, as we all, as you and I know, that almost got hit walking her dog, and that was actually a car coming from the other direction, turning left on green. I mean, it's just a dangerous corner. And it's exactly right, it's because once you get to that white line, that white line is worthless because you gotta start inching forward because you can't see cars coming. I don't know if we have the parking too far up on Bremer, if we need to take some parking spa, you know, that would cause, you know, other issues if we take parking spaces away from the storefronts. If that would be a better line of sight, I don't, I don't, it's...
That's kind of what I was getting at. The sight line here at First Street in Bremer isn't really any better than at Second Street in Bremer or Third Street in Bremer where there are lights.
And it's not the, and I mean, I think, this is my old hobby horse here, I don't think this is the only, the only dangerous intersection. And, you know, you, you see it in any city where you can make a right on red, that I think what you're supposed to do, you are supposed to inch up, but not if someone has stepped into the crosswalk. I mean, otherwise, you know, and it's, I think it's an enforcement thing, again, all the way across town, that we are not a community that is used to paying attention to pedestrians, period. So I think enforcement, and we've come some way, I appreciate the new lights, the crosswalk signs that are up and all of that, but I still wonder whether we're enforcing everything enough. And I don't think just putting this one no right turn on red there is gonna solve that problem. I think it's a bigger, a bigger pedestrian right-of-way yielding to pedestrians issue that we have to address.
Karen?
Thank you. I would just add that I think that corner, though, has a particular problem in that, I mean, you do allow bicycles on the sidewalk. And so people come across the bridge on bicycles, they are running, and I don't think that that's necessarily the same as, same as in the next blocks necessarily of Bremer Avenue. And so, just for example, on the, when Anilia and I were filming those cars, we were standing inside the real estate office, you know, so nobody could see us when we were looking out the window. And there were, there were bicyclists that came off the, came off the bridge, I saw them pass the front window and I thought, oh my gosh, we are gonna film a car accident right here, but the bikes turned left. But I, I believe that if those bikes had not turned left, I would, we would have filmed it.
That's another enforcement, I mean, I for one question allowing bikes on sidewalks at all. But then we agreed that we would in that, in that area, but, you know, that, but only for, was it anybody, anybody in that stretch? Okay. Because I guess I would have preferred just children or something like that, but I guess we did pass, anybody can ride their bikes on sidewalks, which I don't get, but...
Well, and just doing, you know, we were, we actually moved our offices today, but when we were at 9070 Bremer, we would tell our clients, look both ways before you walk out of our office because we had near misses with bicycles. And so fortunately, we didn't have that happen. But again, just being on the bridge, coming from the park and just the speed at which people are coming off of those sidewalks into the crosswalk, I do think is a special danger at that particular intersection.
I think I've had a lot of feedback, including from my wife who's almost it three times, that this is a dangerous corner. I know I've heard from the real estate people on the corner that they were greatly relieved to consolidate because every employee they had was almost killed. So I think we need to keep talking and thinking on this. It's definitely a problem area. There are probably other ways we can address it as well. Backing up traffic on First Street might not be the end of the world if you had, if you didn't go too far back and then there were just people that have to turn right after it turns green and clear out the traffic.
Well, I can tell you, I will never, ever make a right turn on red at that corner. And so I've had plenty of traffic, you know, backed up behind me. That's one of the things, people get super impatient. And so I've had people honk at me and so it makes people more careless. I mean, they want to get on, they want to get on, they don't want to have those cars honking at them and so they are looking at, they're looking left on Bremer Avenue and they are not looking at that crosswalk. And so again, I think, again, I understand that there's a ripple effect of doing this, but I think just in situations where I don't make a right turn on red there anymore, it seems everybody gets through the intersection just fine. But if you, I am asking you, though, if you choose not to do this, please talk to your city workers about what they are to do legally at that crosswalk.
One thing I'd like to add about this is that when the Bremer Avenue is redone, there's discussion about whether it's going to be, continue to be four lanes or maybe three lanes with a turning lane. And it would, it would probably be a lot easier to see to the left if there was one lane of traffic coming at you than there's two. Because that, that inside lane or the outside lane near the parking lane is so hidden by the vehicles that are parked there that you cannot see the vehicles and that's why you're peering so, so long that direction and you forget to look back to the right. So that may be an issue, a reason why we'd want to do something like that on that redesign. Now that's, you know, but that's just a decision, that's an option.
We've also seen redesigns with, with the side streets, with curb cutouts and stuff that would bump out a little bit and minimize, would make it if we had a no right turn situation where we actually make it a little safer for pedestrians because it would be harder for the cars to kind of creep up and kind of creep into that turn before they actually get out onto Bremer because there'd be a curb there now that would actually...
You anticipated my second point was that the idea that perhaps looking at that in downtown area because it may be worthwhile giving the pedestrians some refuge, both going one way and the other way, by having more visibility and more, and getting them out there farther, whether protected by curbs.
Well, and I understand like what Mike was talking about even crossing Bremer because that, I brought up that point with 4th Street and Bremer on the west side with their, you know, cars that are waiting to come north off of, off of 4th Street and to turn left onto Bremer, don't look at the pedestrians trying to cross there and crosswalk at all.
What about removing a parking spot or two?
I think that would be, it could be helpful. I've seen other cities that have done that in those kinds of corners where they've made one spot or they've said no vans or trucks instead of just, having just cars because they're lower and you can see over them.
You'd almost have to go pretty decent far to...
At least two, probably two spots.
At least two.
That's not gonna be popular because obviously people want as many spots in front of their business.
What about like signalized, maybe this would be when they redesign, signalized where no right turn when the light's flashing, where if just you push the button and then the big no right turn red sign starts flashing. I don't know, but if that's more confusing, I can turn right on red sometimes, I can not turn right on red.
I would think that'd be more dangerous if it's inconsistent.
Well, and that was kind of my point about looking at all of those intersections downtown too, just because to have one intersection where it isn't and all the rest where you can turn right, people are, you know, they may get used to going...
Well, people start then, some people start going down a block and, you know, more people...
Just keep in mind that Third Street, you can sit there for between two and three minutes before...
We just construct tunnels everywhere.
Even if there's no traffic coming.
Skyways like Des Moines.
I think we just have to enforce when somebody puts, when somebody steps into the intersection, a car should not be going, a few people get tickets for that. I mean, it's a learning process, but...
We talked about some additional signage maybe on that corner, about, about watching for pedestrians. I don't know that...
It was kind of a question I had, I don't know if, Mike, you can address this. As far as the white striping that goes across the intersections, is that city responsibility to keep those up or is, since it's state highway, is that state or...
Our crews do all the pavement markings on Bremer Avenue and the side streets.
I just noticed last year, I know they have to work through town and that type of thing, but there were parts of town, it was late summer, early fall before they got around to the striping and then two months later, we're dragging snowplows across it. So I'm wondering if these, you can see here, it's very worn, so I'm just wondering if we need to do them more than once a year just to give the driver a little more visual. I think that, to me, is an important signage, just to kind of lay out where the pedestrian space is versus the driver space. I also know by using that corner quite often after leaving City Hall that the line of sight is, is tough, but I, little hasn't it taken away two or three parking stalls to improve it too, so...
But there is parking behind there for, I mean, a lot of parking for business.
I think maybe taking one away would, would help a little. You're still gonna have to edge out to the edge of the Bremer Avenue, but I think that's pretty consistent with any intersection, you're gonna stop behind the pedestrian marking and then if you've got good driving manners, you're gonna work yourself out to where you can get a line of sight and make a safe turn, but... I mean, is it possible to look at trying to do the striping twice a year in these areas or...
That's been talked about in certain areas of town. That's been talked about in, in certain areas of town. And, and the timing of, of when the striping is done or the pavement markings are put down. You know, think of your school crossings. You typically want to do that in late August, just before school. So that's when they're the brightest, most visible. It's a good reminder that school's open. In areas like this, yeah, we've talked about what good is it doing, striping them in, in August? You want to stripe them in May, you know, when the threat of snow is off. And, you know, really kind of helps set off the downtown and you end up with more pedestrian activity as well that time of year.
I mean, are we required to use white versus yellow or something that's a little more visible or?
There, there's a, a, a national color coding that you have to stick with, yes.
Any more thoughts? This is discussion only, but. We will allow something that shouldn't be allowed because we're stuck. But go ahead, Mr. Little, I hope.
Well, it seems like the argument is the city says we need to have traffic going through there no matter what. The safety issue from the pedestrian standpoint is you're going to get run over. Enforcement is, who wants to be the one, the first person that steps off the curb into the crosswalk to be in front of a car? To, to hat, to, in, to, to say, I have the right of way because now I'm now in the crosswalk. Well, you'll probably just get run over that way. It seems as though the, the bump out is the, the answer to this and it's a fairly economical, could be done. Could be started tomorrow, actually, similar to what we got on Fourth Street, on Bremer Avenue at the Fourth Street intersection on the south side. The bump out is about the width of the parking stall, about the width of the car that would be in the parking stall. And that would force the traffic to go straight up instead of cutting the corner. Which, cutting the corners in this town seems to be a tradition. Because I've had a car accident because people are cutting the corners. I mean, and since I've had that accident, I've noticed that there are a variety of different kinds of people, including city people, cutting through the corner, isn't following the driving rules of the road. So a bump out would, would allow a pedestrian to step off and be in the pedestrian crosswalk without the threat of being run over by a car because they'd have about a six foot or five and a half foot kind of a refuge area.
And so the extra time you'd come out.
Yeah.
Be the extra time.
Yeah, say that, say the car didn't come up to the corner, didn't see the pedestrian because they were thinking. And, and I have to admit, I, I'm kind of guilty of that too, looking to the left more than I'm looking to the right. And you have a natural tendency to cut that corner. Well, if there's a bump out there, you can't cut the corner. Pedestrian can be stepping off the curb and into the crosswalk. So now they have the legal right of way. And they can do it without standing in front of a car that's in motion. So it seems like a fairly economical way to resolve the issue.
Thank you.
Just to add to that though, there, it's not necessarily economical. Doing a series of bump outs in the downtown area would not be cheap. It, it's something that would be, require planning. And there's a lot of different things that would happen because of it, because it, it, it changes the way you shovel snow or the way you can, can get to the maintenance of that, that road. So, I mean, that's one of those discussions I think the community has to have before the reconstruction in 17, just to make that decision.
Well, and that was going to be kind of my point. Yes, it's, it's a relatively inexpensive way to put in. But if we were to put them in next year and then in 2017, the state comes through and redesigns the road and now we're tearing it out again. I'm not sure that it's necessarily a feasible option right now, but certainly it's an option once we look at the road design and, and what they want to do with rebuilding that road. I would certainly be interested in looking at that.
When will we start to get more information on that? In terms of any kind of detail and what the plans might be and a timeline and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I, I was going to speak to that, yeah.
Sorry, okay.
In, in regards to that, in, in July, they're going to be doing a very detailed and extensive traffic study. Once, uh, excuse me, the survey work is, is in July, that they're going to get started on that. Once school's back in session in September is when they're going to do the, the traffic modeling. They're going to do the traffic counting. This is where they're going to be putting up a series of cameras at, at all these intersections so that they're able to actually get 24 hour counts on, on the traffic volume and the turning movements as well. I want to find out if they'll also be able to capture pedestrian activity too at that time because that would maybe help us out as well as far as the, the volumes of pedestrian activity and, and which direction they're crossing or designing across the streets. So that will be coming in. That's mine. I'm sorry.
Thought that was Pete's.
Here's go dingaling.
Pete has the rotary still.
I thought.
I added a score center earlier on my phone just at the beginning. I have to use mine.
I, I thought I had turned it off. I apologize. So, and, you know, from that, we're going to have public discussion, both with the council, with the businesses and with the public at large. And, and this is very much a, a discussion opportunity that, that should take place at that time. And help in the decision-making process and, and I, I honestly find Dwayne's comments at times very offensive where he starts to characterize what staff are thinking. And he said tonight that we don't care about the pedestrians, that we only care about the traffic. That is not the case. What we want to make sure that the council and the public is aware of is that for every action, there can be an unintended consequence. So where at first it may be simple to say, let's just put up a sign. We want to make sure that we're thinking through what those potential side effects may be as well as benefits. So that's where we see our role is, is to make sure that we're, we're reviewing everything. And, you know, that will, you know, that's basically where we're at. As far as furthering this, this public discussion, I, I think there will be an excellent opportunity later in the year as the DOT begins to get this information pulled in and there's opportunity for public discussion.
Yeah, and you know, in the chamber, you know, they, they did that downtown master plan a couple of years now. And it was traffic nodes at every, every corner. And, you know, I've kind of always just been expecting that's what we would do. Because that totally makes sense, just like Main, Main Street in Cedar Falls and, and, you know, like we did at Fourth Street. I mean, I, I'm assuming that's what we should do and will do and better do when we get to that point. You know, definitely for starters, I, I just kind of agree with Mike. I mean, you know, we, what, um, what kind of ripple effect could it have? What did it have? You put up for a little bit and it causes more trouble? You know, I, I don't know, maybe Rich could talk to this, this, you know, if you have a problem area and you do increased enforcement for a while, do people tend to then, does that stick forever or, or if it's, you know, how does that generally work or? Hate to put you on the spot, but.
No, that's fine.
You're here, so.
Typically when we set to, to watch and monitor intersections, it's tough to monitor from a distance and see the activity. So when a mark squad car is there, people aren't getting hit and they're paying the law. I mean, and so it's difficult. It is difficult to monitor. And, you know, we want to be responsive, responsive to those things as well. I kind of agree with Edie's comments that I have felt of late that I wouldn't really characterize Waverly as a pedestrian-friendly community as a senses. I, I think people are just in a hurry and, and, and I know the four lane affects that a little bit. And that's why the signs came out. And, you know, we had Darrell Wilsey was up on 16th Street doing a crossing guard. And he was bumped with a car. And I don't know how, you talk about signage, what will a sign have? He had a sign in his hand that said, stop. So sometimes signage and sometimes more signaling isn't necessarily the answer when you have a lot of errant drivers. And, you know, it is enforcement at times, but it's a, sometimes I don't know that it, we're always going to be able to correct driver's error by, by more signage.
What would happen, Rich, if, I mean, if somebody was crossing anywhere, you know, legally as a pedestrian and had the right, and had the right of, the right of way, so to speak. And somebody zoomed through the crosswalk while they were in it, maybe not even close to hitting them, but they know which car it is and they know the license plate. Can that be reported?
Certainly. And, and this will be the hard part. It'll be hard, you know, we'll leave it to attorneys and judges to rule on it is, you know, by law, you know, a vehicle has to yield or stop to a pedestrian. So that doesn't necessarily mean that you can't enter and.
The crosswalk.
Then a crosswalk with a vehicle if there's a safe distance. So, you know, on a four lane road, if they're on the opposite side of the yellows, legal to, to run through there with your.
Right.
Vehicle. So if you're impeding the flow and the safety of the pedestrian, clearly you have to stop. So yeah, if, if they observe something and.
I don't know, even if there could be educational campaigns or something that as a city we could do just to raise the awareness a little bit. Because I, yeah, I, I completely agree with your first comment. I mean, we're, you know, it's just very different than, it's not just because it's a small town. Because I've been in small towns, other small towns, not everywhere, obviously. We're not the anomaly, I don't think. But where there is just much more of a culture of paying attention, paying attention to, to pedestrians and crosswalks.
When this, when the signage came out, there was a lot of, there was newspaper articles. There was a lot of social media out on it. And, and it did help. And, and then what we, quite honestly, over time, from some leadership, we hear people complain about the pedestrian crossing signs as well. And, and I can assure you, with our best intentions to increase our enforcement, in turn, you'll hear complaints about it as well. But, but that's our role as public safety is to, to enforce those things.
Is it possible to put one of those new signs that we have that sit on the ground right next to the curb there? So it reminds them to be looking to the right? I mean, I, whether it be on the curb or right next to the curb, because it's a, it's, it's really designed to be a one lane road. But with the yellow, with the two spots of yellow, it almost turns into a double lane. If people are going straight, they're kind of over to the left and people sneak around to the side of them. But if you had something there that said, yield to the pedestrian in the crosswalk, it's right there in your face. I mean, it's maybe easier to see. Is that a compliment? I mean, is that something we could do and try for a while?
I would defer signage to Mike, but yeah, if Mike's on board with it, we can try it.
Yeah, what about like just, I mean, can you put like a temporary column type thing on the, make like a temporary traffic node, make, force them to, you, were you, you were crossing Bremer or you were crossing First Street?
I was crossing First Street. I was going east.
You're going east.
I was going from the, you know, first block into the.
And, and was it just when you stepped off or was it, were you in the, in the middle?
I had probably taken two steps off.
So they were kind of in the parking lane or were, they were making, like he said, making like a two lane. They weren't way out. They were kind of cutting the corner.
No, and he, when I, when I was at the crosswalk, you know, he's got a red, I've got the green, you know, the lights as I can walk. He stopped and he actually was stopped at the line. And then I took two steps out and that's when he hit me. And I actually fell then on Bremer Avenue because he pushed me around the corner. And he, when he looked, he was looking left and he took the right and pushed me around the corner. So that's when I hit the pavement was on Bremer Avenue.
So what, what if we put like a pole or we put like a, a, a pole there so forcing cars to stay, not cut that corner. As a temporary thing. It could easily be taken out or, I don't know. Does that make sense? Am I making, am I crazy?
I think I was intending the same thing.
Instead of a sign, but something more that if you hit it, you're not, your car's not going anywhere.
Like they do in construction zones with the, the temporary barriers that they'll put up when they shift lanes over and make.
I mean, you know, you know, not, not an elaborate traffic node, but just some sort of either sign or something forcing people to not use that as a turn lane.
Well, I was hoping to use the, what we had already in our.
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah.
And, and see how it works and maybe try that.
It would be.
Who's not using the mic?
I was supposed to remind her to.
I'm sorry, Karen, we should have made sure you got to the mic.
Don't attorneys want to be in front of the mic?
Is it hard for us, maybe this goes to Mike and Bill, but it would be hard for us to do a check of numbers of cars that typically wait on red. I'm just thinking in the larger cities, we have a lot of do not turn on red after stop. It's not allowed. And because of the traffic problems, and there are much bigger towns, even Chicago.
But there are a lot, there are a lot too, Mayor, where there, in big cities where there is no stopping on red, but people just know how to, how to drive and pay attention to pedestrians.
Well, but if we didn't allow a right turn and if the traffic didn't back up that far because there isn't that much traffic, it seems to be a possible solution to keep at least into the discussion. I don't know.
Yeah, it seems like we need the, the restriction when it's the busiest and that's when the, the stacking problem will be the biggest. I mean, those of us who turn right on there four or five times a day, like I do, and I'm much more cognizant of, of the fact and, and actually are much more careful looking to the right. What I see is there's vast times of the day when there's no, there's no pedestrians there. And so that would really cause a lot of stacking in that, in that particular timeframe. But there are times when you have to be very careful and if you're not looking twice or, at least your last look has to be to the right instead of the left. But the speed on, on Bremer right now, coming from the east to the west on that intersection, people are going pretty fast and, and vehicles are going pretty fast through there because they all have the right, they all have the lights kind of in sync. And so they tend to go through there pretty quickly.
Well, but some of the problem is, is not even so that when they do have the traffic, people are disconditioned to fly. That's why you almost need to have it consistent. I don't, Karen?
But I would also say that when, when I got hit, this was not a busy time. You know, it was, it was nine forty in the morning or something. I mean, there wasn't, there wasn't people out. And, and again, I've said to you, I will never take a right turn on red at that intersection again and on, I think it was Memorial Day. And it was raining and I came down to work and, and there was nobody downtown. And I'm sitting at that red light thinking, before I got hit, I would have taken a right turn on red. Of course, I'm not taking the right turn on red. And just as I was thinking that, a woman walked out going west with an umbrella and just stepped right out into the intersection. And again, she and I were probably the only people in downtown Waverly at, you know, nine o'clock in the morning on Memorial Day. But if I had taken a right turn on red, I mean, that, that would have been a close call. So it's not just, it's not just when times are busy. I mean, people that, with the way those buildings are, I think, it's just really hard for people to see. And I, I, I have, I think I asked the city several years ago about this. And even it was a week or two, I think, before I got hit, I saw, I almost saw an accident between two cars. It didn't involve pedestrian, but with somebody taking a right turn on red and they almost got hit by a car that was coming west on Bremer Avenue. And, you know, I told, told my office again and my kids at that time, you are never to take a right turn on red there because I've seen too many close calls. And so I, I understand the, again, the ripple effects of, of what we're talking about. But I do think the safety of the pedestrians has got to be the number one consideration here. And really the only way to make sure we keep them safe is to put a no right turn on red sign there.
Thank you. I want to wrap it.
I just want to ask you, can I ask you a question? What, what are your thoughts about like a, but like we talked about a traffic node type thing or, or cars cannot, you know, the first four feet, first five feet or whatever is blocked, blocked off. So you're, you're walking, you know, you're crossing there, you're walking four or five feet before a car goes. I don't know if they, you would think, see, you think that would have any help?
Right. I, I definitely think something like that would help. And that's what they have in downtown Cedar Falls.
Yeah, they kind of jut out.
Right.
If I, a lot of towns do, when they remodel stuff, they, they do that.
Right.
You're, you're basically halfway out on the road before you actually are on the road. So, you know, hopefully the driver sees it.
Yes. And I, I do think that that would cut, cut down on that. And I also agree with Edie about some sort of educational campaign as well. After I got hit, I talked to a driver's ed instructor about what had happened. And I think people are very, even good drivers are sometimes confused about. think people are very, even good drivers are sometimes confused about what they're supposed to do at a crosswalk. And so, the, the drivers that went through the crosswalk on the day that we were filming them probably didn't think they were doing anything wrong at all, but you, if you are stopped behind a crosswalk, you cannot stop in the crosswalk. I mean, you can't, I mean, you, you've got to pass through it. And so all of these cars were in the crosswalk, in the crosswalk, you know, inching towards, you know, taking that right turn on Bremer Avenue. So I think that there are a variety of things that we can do to help pedestrian, help keep pedestrians safe around the city, not just at that corner.
Let's do some summary statements, uh, I think if, if Edie, Chris, and Tim and Dan, just to-
Yeah, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the problem. I, I guess I feel like I need a little bit more information on the, or, or discussion, or probably both, on, on just what, what the unintended consequences might be if we have some, you know, not just speculation about that, but if we have any more hard information about that. Um, I, I would be interested in hearing that before fully supporting, but I, 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 I understand the problem, and I sympathize with it, and agree that safety has to come first. Just want to make sure we're making the right, uh, decision about a solution.
Chris?
Yeah, kind, you know, my thoughts are kind of similar to that, but I'd like to talk about what kind of signage we could do, even if some, even something in the middle of the intersection, like we have in other places, because, um, my, my mom was crossing the street and she almost got hit. I mean, if her dog was on the other side, her dog would have got hit, that's how close it was, and she was crossing Bremer, and that person was turning left on the, on the green light, so they just weren't paying attention. Um, you know, and we're carrying across, I know that's a problem, and, you know, that corner's a problem, and, and you're right, this is not a pedestrian-friendly town. It's not, not anti, I mean, it's, it's, it could be friendlier, it could be friendlier. Um, yeah, you know, so, I don't know if signage would take care of it, um, but, you know, I, I won't, have no problem putting a big old sign in the middle of the road. If people complain about that, I, I just kind of tell them suck it up, so, um, if they're, if they're hitting those signs, they're not driving correctly. So, but yeah, it is, um, you know, and, um, my, I have a sister lives in California, and we're out there in San Francisco, Berkeley area, they got, the way their signs, I can't remember how they're worded, but, I mean, there's pedestrian, the crosswalk, you stop. I mean, that's pretty much what the signs say. So we, we need to do a better job of, of education. Yeah.
City clerks writing all this down. Tim?
Yeah, it's, it's, it really is an enforcement issue and an education issue. You know, the unintended consequences, I've mentioned before, talking about when we'd put the new stop lights in, and, uh, they have the nice little counter counting down to when the, the light's going to turn yellow to, to red. It's, it's really not an indication for people to stop. It's, it, it's an indication that, oh, that's how much time I have to hit the gas and get through the intersection to go, and that's, that's kind of been the unintended consequence of that. I mean, the intention of that was to warn people that, you know, yellow is supposed to mean prepare to stop, it's not meant to mean hit the gas and, and, and gun it, uh, but that's, that seems to be what's happened in town with some of those, so, um, I certainly, yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to something that can help, if it's even Chris's idea of putting temporary, you know, little barriers in there to widen that pedestrian area, make a, make a mini node or a temporary node type of situation there. Um, that's something that could be even removable potentially during snow situations and, and allow for some cleaning that way, um, along those. But then again, I, I would also say we should be looking not just at this intersection, but at the other intersections for consistency.
Yeah, thank you. Dan?
Echo a lot, I, I guess, again, I think maybe coming up with a different scheme for when we paint the crosswalks would be helpful, just to designate that space a little bit more. Uh, I, I guess I see the same type of activity going on at all the intersections downtown where there's close misses, people aren't watching. This one's a little bit unique, because you do have the speed of the traffic coming off the bridge, that type of thing, so I'd be more willing to look at this as a standalone intersection versus the rest of them, but I-
I agree with that.
And we don't, it, it's tough. I, I, and I, I think, sometimes I look at it just the way we've done the ADA crossings there, where we put them in kind of at an angle. I catch myself, I'll see people walking up there, and, and they walk kind of to the, the corner more than to one side street or the other, so I might think they're going to go across the street versus coming across Bremer Avenue, and I start to make my move just to find out they went a different direction. So I, I'm hoping through the redesign, uh, we can address some of those things, either with nodes or two distinct ADA crossings or those type of things. But, uh, again, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention and, and, uh, at least making us think about it and, and look for ideas.
And I guess, if I could just add one more thing, I guess I, um, yeah, the, the redesign will be awesome, you know, because I think we'll do some traffic note type of things, but I, I would like to try, I'm interested in trying something before then, I mean, with signage or, or something creating-
I don't know if it would make sense.
Maybe, maybe a no right turn is what we end up trying, I don't know, but I don't know if I want to wait two years to try something, and I don't think that's what you're saying, but-
No, and-
More of a permanent solution in two years, but-
You know, my thought when you said put the barricade out was just take one of the, the signs that we put on the center yellow line and put it on the center yellow line of First Street, so that as you drive up there, it's right there on your right or left-hand side, that's the direction everybody's looking for traffic. It, it may be the quickest, easiest reminder.
And I was the one thinking of putting something in the parking way there, and the parking-
Yeah, I understand what you're getting at, just to keep cars-
More heavier, if they hit it.
Sneaking over there, but-
They're going to regret hitting it.
I guess maybe-
But we could easily start with a, with a sign. I mean, that would be something if city staff agrees and is willing to do that, you could easily start with a sign there, and then see.
Being the, probably the safety geek in the room and sticking something out there, and now you've got bicyclers going around the corner and catching it or something like that.
Well, put, yeah, we put it before the, yeah, put it before the crosswalk, but-
So it's, you start adding things that people aren't expecting to see, it becomes a hazard and-
Well, that's, that, that would be just like putting a no right turn red, it'd take a while for people to realize that. Pedestrians might assume people are going to not turn right on red until people are used to the sign too, for a small, a small period of time. Kind of like when we put the detour in, when we covered up, this weekend, we covered up all the stop signs, but everyone kept stopping and looking both ways, and it was causing some backup until people kind of figured it out.
Heard it out.
And it moved pretty good, but-
I, I mean, to take the discussion forward, I don't know if it's appropriate to ask staff to come back with a couple ideas in a week or two, and I, I just hate to let this hang without any direction or resolution.
I'd like to see some ideas. Make that a little safer. Anywhere from getting a police drone out there to spy on people to, to, uh, you know you want one.
And I, and I do think we need to keep alive that no right turn on right, on red, so, but-
Yeah, absolutely.
We've all weighed in, I hope that's enough for city staff. Uh, discussion, item number two is a discussion to review, and review of the proposed urban revitalization plan to provide incentives for multifamily renovation and development. Um, Mr. Wigger, you've done a lot of work on this.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you that af, after last Monday, um, I didn't really have a lot of time to, to redo anything, and so I really just gave you all the materials I gave you last time, but I, when I was preparing for tonight, I, I really wanted to talk about it in a more, a general way, the urban renewal, or the urban revitalization discussion, because urban revitalization is a tool to use tax abatement to, um, generate, uh, incentives for a, a variety of things, including commercial property, including, um, all kinds of housing, and, um, it, it is not just necessarily a multifamily or multi-residential housing, um, chapter to use, uh, it, it, I did it, I did prepare a multi-residential plan, because the discussion that I had had with, with a variety of people indicated that in order to do it for single-family housing, that would be a very, a much more difficult and more, um, complicated process in the va, in, in the sense that our single-family needs are so varied, and one plan may not really fit that, um, aspect of what we're trying to do. So I started with what I thought was the, the biggest need. I know people have differences of opinion as to whether or not we have a need for multifamily, but what, what I want to really do is to say that we should probably have this discussion regarding other types of housing, um, including, you know, the, 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 um, single-family dwellings. I think that back at, there was a time when I, when I presented and I, I talked about single-family units in the core of the city that will be coming out of the flood zone designation for special hazards in a year or two, um, when we complete the dry-run project and have it remapped. Um, I've talked to various, uh, experts, um, at, at the state level about whether or not this would qualify that area for, um, what, what we don't like to call slum and blight in our community, but in, in some ways, slum and blight is used as a general term, and it also involves whether there are a combination of factors that affect, um, the current use and condition of those, of those, um, housing units. And, and I think the fact that those housing units have had to pay flood insurance of huge amounts every year has probably resulted in those units being somewhat blighted from what they could have been, had there not been that, that requirement, so, and they thought, the people I talked to thought that this would be a perfectly legitimate way of, of including an area in the plan that would allow for those people within that area, when they come out of the flood zone, to actually be able to, um, take advantage of this urban revitalization plan that we could create. And, and you can really create a plan that has sub-plans within it, so you can do a combined plan that has different provisions for different types of property. So you can have a multi-residential, you can have a single-family and duplex plan, and then you can have a commercial plan. Because there are actually five areas, or five reasons that you can do one of these plans, um, two of which kind of deal with slum and blight and obsolescence and that kind of thing. The first two subsections, the, the C subsection in that, uh, is, um, buildings and improvements by reason of age, history, architecture, or significance should be preserved or restored to productive use. I think that applies, we have three, um, historic districts now, or we'll have a third soon, and I think that can be used in those areas too, to allow for some of those houses and buildings that haven't been brought up, you know, and, and improved to do so. Um, the other thing that, that, under the UR plan, you can designate areas that are appropriate for economic development, that's a pretty general term, so it gives you a pretty broad use of a lot of land to put in a, a plan where you really just want to encourage development. Um, and the last area is, it's, areas designated as appropriate for public improvements related to housing and residential development, and areas where there, when you want to increase the construction of housing and residential development, including single-family and multifamily. So this chapter is very broad in its, in its, your, the city's ability to use it for a variety of things, and all it takes is some direction as to what we really want to provide incentives for, and write that into the plan, whether it be a, a commercial Main Street district, or a, um, or a single-family district such as the one in the center core of town. So that's my long-winded idea that we can use this plan for a variety of things, and it doesn't have to be just this, this controversial multifamily thing alone, um, although it's used by a lot of places for that multifamily, um, that multi-residential incentive process. The other thing is, is, you know, revitalization is not a grant program that gives huge amounts of money. Um, you know, if I, if you look at the kinds of benefits that are given, certainly if you're going to build a new multi-residential project, you're going to get the biggest bang for the buck. If you're, if you're improving a commercial property in the downtown area and you put fifty thousand dollars into your building, your tax abatement is not going to be that great. It might be eight or nine percent of the, the project that you, the money that you put into it, and that'd be over the period of time in which you're able to take the abatement, so it's not all at once. So this is, this is just one use that, that cities are using, uh, one reason cities are using the urban revitalization plan, and it's been around quite a while. Um, it, it's being used, but it's just one of those things that you can use to provide some additional incentives. Um, so that being said, I, I know there were some questions, and I'm going to, I've, I've given you answers to Dave Resencheck's questions through email, and I will email them to him too, because I just did them right before the meeting, but I, when I get done, and the other two council members that aren't here, I'll, um, send them out the responses. But I, I think what we need to see is that Chapter 404, what it is not, and I think, I'm not sure where, where Dwayne got the, the conversation about eminent domain, because this is not a, a, a chapter that's used for taking property and using it for other reasons, that's urban renewal. Urban revitalization is clearly a tax abatement incentive program, which gives the city the right to, to basically not tax you for a period of time on improvements that fit within the plan. And so it's, it's not forcing anybody to do anything they don't want to do with their property. So if you, if their property is within the plan area, they can take advantage of it, and if they don't want to, they don't have to, and there's no penalty for it, and nobody's going to take them or force them to do it. So it isn't, it, it is clearly an incentive program under 404, just for that purpose. It, it is a very specific program, and I think just to answer some of Dave's questions is, it's, it's an air, it's a, it's a, um, it, it's not something you can do your own plan in order to get the tax abatement, the power to do the tax abatement, you have to use this chapter, and you have to qualify your plans under this chapter. So it isn't something, you can do something like that, but not exactly like that. If you're going to use tax abatement for incentives, you have to use Chapter 404. Um, you can use other types of things and other funding sources to provide a grant program, or a loan program, or something of that nature, doing, to do incentives, and you can do that without following the state code, because there is no, I mean, there's, if you just want to give grants, you can establish your own program. Sometimes those grants that you might give would be, um, depending on what source you get the money from, if you get the source from a state fund or a federal, uh, fund, they may have rules about how you can give that money out, but you can actually set a lot of that criteria if you're just using your own TIF money or your own, um, money in, in, from the, the property taxes to give incentives for certain kinds of housing development. That's really a different thing, and that's for a different discussion, because when we start talking about housing incentives, you can do the things that other communities have done, you can give them ten thousand dollars if they buy a house in town, or you can give them tax abatement, um, of, of the taxes that you receive, that the city receives, but you can't abate all of the taxes unless you use the program. Um, it's, it's, that's the difference between it. The city can say, I don't need my ta, you know, we can abate our taxes, but you can't abate the other taxing authorities. So it's, it's really, I, I like to look, I, I like to look at this as, as just looking for direction. Um, you know, it, this is really different than the discussion last Monday, and the discussion last Monday was about two very specific state programs, and one's a state-federal partnership program, and those are really, have different considerations, different, you know, philosophies about what they're used for, and people can disagree about those things, um, and they can disagree about doing any incentives, uh, but this abatement is, is intended to be, we're just going to delay collecting taxes on improvements, um, as an incentive for different things that we want to do, um, and that's where I'm just looking for direction. So I'll be quiet and then answer questions if you have.
That was helpful, thank you. Discussion.
I guess there's two points I just kind of want to make sure we're very clear on. One is, uh, I know in some of Dave's comments last week in, in his email, and Dwayne referring to eminent domain, uh, there has never been any discussion within the Economic Development Commission of trying to utilize, uh, 403, Chapter 403 of the state code, which does deal with renewal and the possibility of eminent domain, so, um, I'm not sure why that's creeping into this discussion, because it's-
No, but it's good to make clear. It's good to make clear, and-
Glad you made that.
And if people are worried about it, it needs to be-
And then, then just one quick question, uh, the abatement, is it only the city portion of the tax, or would it be the whole tax?
It's the whole tax.
So the school system?
Right. And, yeah. That, that's why this chapter has to be followed, because in order to qualify for the exemptions, you have to, you, the, the abatement, you have to use and have the reasons set forth, so that somebody can't challenge why you've put an area into, um, the urban revitalization plan, because it really does have to fit.
Basically like TIF, I mean-
Yep, yep.
But we can determine the length of time of the abatement?
Yes, you can actually do a six-month, you can do a three-year, you can do a five-year, you can do an indeterminate- you can do an indeterminate, and you always have the right to come back at, at a, you know, as soon as you can get it on the agenda to vote it and cancel it. And the only, only properties that have been, that have submitted applications for that process that are in the works would then be honored, and then anybody who didn't fill out an application before you rescinded it wouldn't be able to take advantage of it. So you can say, hey, we're getting too far into this, we're, we're doing more than we need to do, let's get it stopped, and you can, you can stop it.
I mean, I've gone out and done some Google research, and there's communities out there that, based on commercial residential, have different rebate or abatement structures. So it, it seems to be very flexible, and there's a couple of communities like Dubuque, it looks like they've been using this since the early eighties, and every few years, they put another section of the community into the, the program. So I'm assuming they're using it to do some targeted reinvestment in the community, those type of things.
There were some smaller communities that actually put their entire town in it, and, and I think some communities that might work, because you, if you have a smaller community, you might just have properties scattered throughout the entire community that might qualify for that definition. Others have done, I think Cedar Falls did a College Hill area or other, Mason City, I think, has a specific area that they've outlined in the, in the central core. So you really can just kind of pick the streets that you want to put your lines around and say, you know, we have to pick a line somewhere, and then you just sort of identify. And then you can make amendments to the plan if you, if, if somebody comes to you and says, our neighborhood would like to have this, would you like to, would you do this for our neighborhood? And we'd like to do that kind of discussion ahead of time, perhaps, you know, basically making it available and saying, if you think your property should be in, or your neighborhood should be in, tell us why, and we'll, we'll give that consideration.
Are there small towns that have included, sounds like there's not much incentive for single-family, but do you know of any small towns like Waverly that would have used this for either single-family or commercial?
Uh, but they've used them for both. I mean, you know, Grinnell has a plan that has, I think, three, three different areas. There were other plans, I, I had, one of my notes, I had, I had like 12 or 14 cities that I had written down that I, I found plans. I haven't seen a lot of brand-new ones, and so I don't know how many are really doing new ones, because I've seen a lot of elevens and tens and twelves and thirteens where the plan was adopted. And some of them have expired and some of them haven't. Generally speaking, when, when they put it in, they, they usually don't remove it, because it isn't really a thing that they have to worry about budgeting, because it is, it's like tax increment, and where you give the taxes back, you're just not getting the taxes that, on the increased value. So you're still getting the taxes you got under the old, you know, the old assessment. So this is just a way of capturing some of that, or at least not capturing it and giving it back to the.
And only for the improvements?
And only for the improvements, not for the, the base.
I mean, I would encourage everyone to go out and, and do a Google search on Grinnell's. I think you could take their plan and cut and paste Waverly into it, the reason they're doing it, the, the areas that they're trying to see growth in match up very well with us. I mean, they're another college community where, and they've got multi-residential, commercial, they've got residential, they even have a section on abandoned property that they treat differently if there's something that's been declared abandoned, they give a little bit more incentive there to, to try to get that back.
Yeah.
Into the tax role of, of a good piece of property, that type of thing.
The chapter allows you to use 15-year tax abatement for abandoned properties that are rehabbed, and that, that's a really good benefit, especially since the value of the existing unit is probably very low. So when you rehab it, your, most of your taxes are going to be abated for up to 15 years, and that, it's a sliding scale, so it's not just 15 years across the board, it's a sliding scale, but it's, it's much more advantageous for those communities that have a lot of issues with abandoned properties.
I know both Phil and I tried to connect with Grinnell City Administrator Manager last week, but with schedules, we just couldn't, just, again, it looks like they, in 2013, redid theirs, so I'm assuming they brought in a different section of the town, that type of thing, and just to see how, what their experience has been with it, and maybe some things to watch out for, those type of things.
And I think we would want to, I mean, want to align it with our strategic initiatives, I would guess also, right? I mean, we need to have some guidance for prioritization if we were to move ahead with anything like this.
I know there's some questions about the exhibits that we haven't created yet, and the, and the exhibits would have been identifying the kinds of properties that we would put into the area. And I, I kind of had a list of, of areas that, that I would have put into the multifamily. I didn't really start working on the single-family, because I think that's one of those where we'd probably take the central core, and we might go north a little bit around the, the railroad tracks or some areas that, that may be beyond the floodplain issue. But generally, it'd be the central core probably for the single-family incentive, and the commercial would probably be more along Main, you know, the Bremer Avenue, the Main Court, Street Corridor, as opposed to other places that, that don't necess, we can see though, it, it just depends on what you want to put into it. Keep in mind though, that if, if you're building new, you get a lot more benefit from this. So if you're building a multi-residential, you know, million-dollar building, you're going to get, you know, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars in taxes over three years. If you're putting $75,000 into a single-family residence, over five years, you're going to get back maybe 7,000 bucks, you know, so you're maybe getting a eight, nine, or 10% rebate of, of your taxes for that. So it's not, obviously, the rehab is not as good as the brand-new when you're building those. And I, I agree that.
If you had a 10 to 12 units in a building, what would, what would it look like?
Well, if you're doing a, like, if you're doing a multi-residential, like I said, a million dollars, let's say, you know, I, I did one for, I think, 850, and I think the total rebate over 10 years would have been about 85,000, and for three years, it would have been 65,000. So that's, that's the 850.
That's not new, though.
Well, that is new.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about if you have a unit already, and we're, because we want to help a lot of these units.
Sure.
That are needing a little bit.
But if you did that, you, you just use a different number. So if you, if you had a large unit, if you had a large complex, and you put a half-million dollars into your complex, of course, the value has to support that, but if you do a half-million dollars, you're still going to be in the 50 to 60,000 dollar range for rebates, or for abatements.
Over 10 years, 10 or 15 years?
Yeah, well, if you do 10 years, it, it's, it's either the sliding scale over 10 years or the three-year total.
Okay.
And the three-year total actually works better for the city, they get more taxes on new improvements, especially with multi-residential, because with the, my spreadsheet's really complicated, because you had to factor in the, the rollback on multi-residential, and then you have the 10-year sliding scale. So it, it really did become kind of confusing. But it's going to settle into that rollback that's, that, that is given to all residential property, and so you just figure whatever it is for that 54, or that, what is now 54% rollback, you just, that's what it is, it is what it is. And you just get an abatement, whatever the taxes are that are calculated on that value.
All the numbers you've thrown out so far seem to be for 10 years, around 10%, close to it.
I mean, I think if you look at some of the tables, you're in that seven to eight, nine percent total return, so if you're investing 10 million, your.
Yeah.
Your numbers are going to be bigger, but project by project, it's still that same.
Mm-huh.
And if you look at what we have traditionally done for incentive, it's been in that eight to 10%, but the good thing about this is it's, it's no tax dollars coming out of the budget, this is just abating that tax and those type of things. I think the other thing that was kind of talked about briefly in economic development is, is this kind of gets us, us as, as the community out of the plain favorites. This would be open to anyone, if they want to improve, build, pick up an abandoned building and do something different with it, they can do whatever they want, and we don't have to start picking favorites or picking winners and losers, as we're accused of doing sometimes.
You do sort of have to pick areas, though, because it, I mean, I, one of my intent was, was to try to pick infill areas, areas that are already have, already have infrastructure to them. We're not talking about, you know, green spaces, you know, adding on to the outside of the community or anything of that nature. We're talking about filling in areas that are ripe for development, so, and so, and, and that property's held by certain people at this point. I mean, you know, there's people that own those, those areas, but I'm, you know, we're open to adding areas, especially existing. You know, we were trying to look at apartment buildings that have, you know, that have been around for 20, 25, 30 years, to give the help to those owners, we'd like to put them in the plan, they don't have to take advantage of it, but at least they'd be in the plan.
Yeah, I guess I kind of see this, you know, plan, like you mentioned, the, the dry run, gives some people opportunities there, once that's moved, you know, definitely Bremer. You know, as far as new, new single-family houses, our problem, I think, isn't, no one wants to build, tons of people want to build, it's, you know, if you want to start out, you want to build a, you know, a starter-type home, we don't have any R4 subdivisions with any lots. You know, we're, we, we very may well soon, with the one we approved last week, that, you know, that's where I think, we, we got plenty of lots, you know, some, some higher, awesome, nice-in lots, but yeah, the, it's the R4. Like Roy used to live, there's 85 houses there now that have been built over, you know, 12 years, because they're, you know, little narrow 60-foot lots, you know, they're, they're affordable. So when, when we talk about single-family homes, that, you know, we needed to, not, maybe not necessarily this plan, but make sure that we're, we're doing things that keep the price of those lots down, you know, I don't know, you and I talked about that a little bit on Thursday.
If we can help a little bit with infrastructure at times, I mean, there may be.
Yeah, what are we, you know, are we doing things that are making the lots higher that some towns aren't doing, or are we requiring some things, you know, I, I don't know, is kind of streets be put in or, or what? Because the, yeah, the more expensive, you know, if you end up, you know, with like 40, 45,000 dollar lot, you're not going to, you know, build a smaller home on that. I mean, it, it takes away the.
Practicality and.
So, but yeah, definitely for, you know, you know, rehab and, you know, like, seems to make sense. Is that, you, you were the only one probably here, Tim. After, after the flood, we had some program, that people did stuff, was that, was that different? Was that a grant-type thing?
There was, that, yeah, that was.
Wasn't this?
No, that wasn't this, and that wasn't, Mike might remember that probably better than I did, because I think that was the council right after the flood did that, and I didn't come in for, I was on the tail end of it, kind of picking, ending that, that we had a rebate program, or, or, Jack, do you remember?
That FEMA, that FEMA thing maybe?
We had a intercut.
Yeah, we waived some building permits.
Waived some permit fees, and was there anything else with it? Or was it just the fees?
Yeah, there was remodeling stuff, or was that, was that a federal?
Prior to that was the CDBG that, that people had to apply, and then this is, that was more lead, lead-based paint and asbestos.
Yeah, it was, I do remember the fees, and we had a lot of people that had fees.
Right, that, yeah.
Okay. So that, that, is that what you were thinking?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's other ways of asking for grants from the state that, as a city, that we then use for a specific program. So we may be able to fund a, a different kind of thing than abatements, but, you know, and this is just one way of, and giving incentives, you know, that we can still use infrastructure assistance for subdividers if, if we, you know, get a water line to them, or, or something of that nature, we can do some of those kinds of things that, that benefit more than just the developer.
Then, yeah, I, I go back and forth on that, because then we got, you know, existing ones that we haven't done that on, so maybe it makes more sense to come up with a program for the, the people, the, move it into the house, you know, so then it's, then it's a matter where they build, so that's why I go back and forth on that, but, but.
I guess you just hit on one other point to clarify. If this is set up, it doesn't preclude a developer from going after some other granting funding stream or anything like that?
Correct. If somebody was doing this, there, there is an intention that you could say that you don't get to take advantage of the workforce grant program or something else. Although I think you can put those kind of provisions in, but I don't think they gen, people generally do that, because, again, this isn't a major, for, for some projects, this isn't a major funding source, so it may be, you know, that they want to go after more, more than that.
I guess some of the clarification that, that I was looking for with this, was looking at the difference between the abatement and a rebatement.
Well, and, and we may have been kind of throwing those terms back and forth interchangeably, this is clearly an abatement incentive, which means you certify the value, the assessor certifies the portion of the value that's attributable under this chapter to that application, and they don't tax that, that value. So they value, they just tax the old value, and they don't tax the new value for the period of time in which they, they elect. Because under this plan, you can elect a three-year total, under some of the, some parts of the plan, you can do a three-year total or a 10, or a five-year or 10-year sliding scale, and once you've picked it, you can't change that election. You can also just offer one or the other, because we don't have to do both, you can say it's all three years and that's it, so it'd just be over and done with.
So, I mean.
And rebatement is, it, it's the same thing, though, Tim, because if, if they pay the taxes and we turn around and pay it back to them.
A portion of it, usually.
It's, it's a, well, we, they don't get it back until they pay us, but it's the same result.
But yes and no, because the concern I have with the abatement portion of it is, you're saying they're not paying the taxes above the certain rate, so they've got this certain rate. If they don't actually raise the value, or the value doesn't actually rise that much, you know, the, the, the person, the, the, the redevelopers, the investors, you know, they're, they're seeing, they're not seeing anything actually coming back to them, it's just an assumed savings towards them. So there's not, you know, there, there isn't that, you know, direct flow or direct, you know, in, in my mind, there isn't a direct correlation and attributable, you know, this, you've gotten this much back, or, or this much back. Versus the rebate, they pay 5,000 in, we give 2,500 back, then there's the incentive that they're, they're going to get the money back once they've generated it. This is kind of like, they're just, okay, you know, maybe I did a few things, and it, and then the negative side to, to me for the abatement portion is then suddenly after five years, it's going to go from here to jump up on them, on the taxes, versus the rebate where it's kind of a gradual, and then, you know.
But the actual, but actually, the provisions of 404.4, which requires prior approval of eligibility, and 405, 4.5, which is physical review of the property by the assessor, requires the assessor to approve and actually incorporate the valuation that we're talking about. So they don't set their own value, if they say, I'm going to spend $100,000, and, and the assessor goes out and goes, you didn't raise the value by 100,000, you know, that's not going to happen, because they have to, it still has to be the assessor who sets the increase in value. So it's, it's the increase in value that triggers the abatement, not what they spent to do the improvement, because it's not dollar-for-dollar, it, it really does relate to the, the assessment part. And that's where I think there was a miscon, miss, that was misconstrued, construed to some extent, that we're not inspecting people's properties, only the assessor has the right to do that, and in fact, they have to give them the right so that they can properly assess the property. Because you wouldn't want to do that for the three years they're getting an abatement, and then have them come in and challenge their assessment. Because then, that's what they do, they challenge their assessment after three years, and they would go back to the original value, and you would have given them, I, it, we're, we're just trying to use the, the program that they've used for 20, 30 years here and, and use it the way they're designed it, which I think works pretty well.
Yeah, well, and I noticed that at one point in the document that you prepared, that you actually did use the term "city assessor."
Oh, I did, I, I did that 15 minutes before I came in, so I apologize if I missed some of those.
No, this wasn't, this was what was put in the packet.
Oh, okay.
Last week, so this is, been there for a little bit.
Okay.
Eight point eight, to be specific on that, so that, 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 to me, I am far more comfortable dealing with the rebate, because that's actual money paid in, and then doing a percentage of it back. So they're, they're only getting back that which they've actually paid in. To me, that's a control that's, I, I like, I'm more comfortable with than the idea of just waiving taxes, and certainly waiving taxes on, on the school and county and. and certainly waiving taxes on, on the, um, school and, and county and, and regional area, community college and all the other whoever else might have taxing hands in on, on people's, you know, controlling our side of it. And I think it's equally fair, uh, to anybody that wants to do a redevelopment or a, a repurposing or even building new to improve on their property, uh, as far as that sort of thing, that anybody can do that. And whether it's a single-family home or whether it's a, an existing multifamily residential unit or however. And, and, and that's, that's where I would be more comfortable. That's why I was com- comfortable with last week it being a rebate, why I put that in. It's, it, to me, that rebate portion is, you know, they're not getting anything until they've generated something that's actually tangible that we actually see. It's not an amount, you know, the assessor can put a value on it, but then they can go back in and challenge it later and, and come back. And, you know, five years they got it waived, and then at, on year six, they go and challenge it and get it reduced down in value, and it's.
But, but if it was, if it was really not value that was there after three years and it, and it goes back to where it was? And if it really wasn't there, then we didn't really lose anything, because the value wasn't increased at the time. And we can't choose rebates under this chapter. I mean, you use this chapter, we have to use e- abatement. And with rebates, if you're talking about TIF, uh, TIF programs, they're very limited to LMI with housing. I mean, it wouldn't be as.
We could do our own city version with a rebate program in terms of offering rebate incentive.
We can't rebate the full thing though, the full tax.
No, I wouldn't be talking about rebating the full.
Okay. The forty percent that we control, you mean?
Yeah. Within what, what we control, we could, that's where I'm, I would be looking at.
It's not much of incentive though, compared to the whole, I mean.
And the city, wouldn't we, I mean, wouldn't, it both, wouldn't be much of an incentive. And the city wouldn't be able to capture as much, at least on the improved proj- the improvement projects, the city wouldn't be able to ca- uh, capture as much, uh, fun, uh, uh, money either.
And, and without the power of the assessor being able to actually physically review the property and make sure that the, that it, it should be properly done that way.
Yeah, we can't prove that, you know, worse, you know.
So, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I like using rebates under TIF for maybe even the, the, um, the central core. Because we may be able to do an LMI, um, area for that and do a, an LMI urban renewal. But that's something we have to look at in, in, in a year or two when we get to that point.
I mean, Tim, in terms of, you know, um, I understand what you're saying in the sense that with a, with a rebate, um, it's new. I mean, it's, it's taxed, uh, tax dollars coming in and then rebated. But the end result is kind of the same, isn't it? I mean, if, if, uh, if there's no, if we're, if we're not taxing, I mean, if it's abated, so there are no tax dollars coming in, but there aren't any going out either. I mean, isn't, doesn't kind of boil down to the same thing. And the difference is that under the abatement plan, the old taxes continue to be paid. Whereas under rebatement, how would we figure out, you know, what would be the cutoff? What percentage to still make that kind of both an incentive and cash flow, so to speak?
Cash flow would, I mean, they would be paying the taxes in, and we would rebate from the taxes that they paid in.
Right, but what percent, what percentage is?
And that would, that could be, I mean, that could be set by city policy. Dan's already mentioned that we've typically gone in the eight to ten percent range with things, uh, and that seems like a fair enough number. What, what I'm looking at is kind of that transparency issue for the public to say, we've given, you know, we said, okay, you're going to do improvements, we'll, we'll abate you a hundred thousand dollars of your improvements. Well, there's no money coming in, there's no money going out. Nobody really knows how much is actually there, how much has actually been there. It's what the assessor said it might have been, but, you know, again, four years now, five years now, they can go back and, and reassess that and have it down, and then we're like.
But the abatement requires that the assessor change the assessed value of the property.
The rebate, the rebate doesn't.
They said it.
Rebate wouldn't.
But it, it's assessed at that, but then after however many years, if they go and get it reassessed down.
Won't they do that on your, on the, on the rebate plan after we're done paying rebates? Won't they go back and get reassessed down?
Yeah, but they will have paid in the, the increased value over that. So, there isn't, to me, it's, it's, there isn't a, from the developer side of it, there isn't going to be a, kind of a workaround, you know, we're, we're going to get this for, for free money for a little bit, and then turn around and.
I, I think, I think both programs, abatement and rebatement, under the, the urban renewal or under revitalization, have, have things built into them to prevent that kind of thing from happening. And so that theoretically, they should be the same. Whether people understand them as well, that, that may be the, that may be, you're, you may be right about that, that it's easier to understand paying in the tax and then getting a check back than it is just having no taxes assessed on that portion of the value.
I'm, I'm thinking from a city council and being able to justify to somebody, well, how much money did you give to this project? We gave this much money over this many years, because that's what they paid in and we rebated this much back to them. Versus an abatement where we can kind of wave our hands and say, yeah, it's about this, because that's what the assessor said it was, until they change the assessed value later.
But, but a rebate plan, the assessor still needs to go there and say what the pro- what the value is, decrease the value. And they still pay, then at the end.
We rebate a portion of it.
Yeah, every year, but then.
If we're going to give a hundred thousand dollars, they have to pay in.
Right.
You know, a hundred and fifty, two hundred fifty, whatever, thousand dollars in taxes first, that we rebate that portion back to them.
Right.
As opposed to the abatement where they're not paying anything in, and we're just kind of waving our hands and going, yeah.
Right, but, but at the end of your rebate plan, they can still go to the assessor and get that lowered.
But they've already paid the extra taxes.
But they gave, they got it right back.
But aren't we, aren't we dealing with just, when we're dealing with rebate, when we're dealing with just the forty percent?
Right.
Right. When we're dealing with the abatement program, we're dealing with a fuller package.
Yeah, and they'd actually, I would be interested in that more.
Which would be more of an incentive, I would think.
Well, and to me, it, if I'm understanding what Tim's explaining, to me, it drastically changes the label put on the program. If, if we're abating, we're not really giving money to anybody. It's, they're being rewarded for, for improving the community. If, if they pay it in and we give it back, to me, now we're incentivizing that development. And then we are doing something, but we're really not. Because we're just giving them back the money that we wouldn't have asked, they wouldn't have had to pay. To, to me, the, the end result to the developer, to the builder is exactly the same. They either don't have to pay out as much money just to get some portion of it back. Their bottom line stays the same, but it changes how we, and maybe the community, would look at this program. Is it an abatement where it's open to everybody and they all equal, being treated equally, to now we're incentivizing development directly by making a rebate?
Bill, would they come out even?
Well, we can use, we can actually use, for some properties, we can use either program. But for some properties, we can't use the, the rebates. Because it's a, because you can only qualify certain properties. You can't just, because urban renewal requires certain things to, in order to get the rebates. But for a lot of properties, you could use either one. And you can, and, and then you can have your own that doesn't use any of the state rules. You could just say, I'm going to give so much, um, actually, though, most of those use abatement instead of rebatement. If you, if you say, I'm coming to your community, and we say, we're going to abate our taxes for ten years. It's usually abatement, not rebatement. They don't have to pay it in actually in those situations. Cause it's, it, they just certify to the, to the assessor, don't collect our forty percent taxes. We don't want it from these people. They still have to pay the other taxing authorities.
I think it's almost simpler or more transparent that way, Tim, in some ways. I think you can make an argument either way for it. But I, in your, in your case for rebatement, are you saying then, whatever percentage we would decide, that that would apply to, um, in, in, if we're talking about, um, uh, redevelopment, not building a new, then would the rebate be only on the assessed improvements or on the whole property?
It'd be on the improvements.
Okay, only on the improvements.
And, and I guess what I'm getting to is th- this would be, the rebate would be consistent with what we passed last week, which is a rebate. We did not do an abatement last week.
Well, and we weren't, but the, we weren't going to do an abatement. We were going to pay that out of Economic Development Fund, so we did this instead. This wasn't going to be.
We were going to pay it out of economic, and then they, then they were going to pay it back in form of rebates.
Actually, we are going to try to use a program like this to qualify for the abatement, because, yeah, otherwise you have to have a funding source. And if you use a funding source, if you use your TIF fund, then you've depleted your TIF fund by that amount. And there's no, there's no recovery of that fund. Whereas if you use abatement, you're not using up that fund that's finite.
And, and part of the reason I was comfortable with last week being able to go with it was the rebate portion. And if we're starting to talk about doing a different program now, and this is getting to, to what Dave was talking about, having that in place ahead of time, okay?
When we talk.
Be less comfortable with what we did last week, because.
But what we did, when you, when you did that last week, that forty-eight thousand, what we assumed we would do is to set up an urban renewal district in order to capture taxes from that project, to allow us to fund the forty-eight thousand we're giving back to them. Because that's what our intent was to use, is urban renewal for LMI, because that's the kind of project they're, they're, they're putting up. That would not apply in other situations that are not LMI projects. We can use it for that project, because it is an LMI project. So, we can say, we can capture, we can put an urban renewal plan area around that project.
And see, this is where it's getting into the language and stuff that makes it harder to defend the public to say, well, we did this with this project and this with this project. Oh, you played favorites over here versus, I want, I want to try to keep it all the same, so that it's all under the same umbrella that we're saying this is what we do.
Well, we can create.
This is our policy. This is not, we're going to do this for these people, we're going to do this for these people, we're going to do this for these people. It's, you know, that, that, that's my wish with the rebate, rebate portion of it, which, to me, I don't think we need to do the whole 404 and, and that, that that could be a city part, portion that we could control.
With urban renewal, with TIF, we can, we do pick the areas. We pick who, who gets to be in the urban renewal areas. We've done that before. And that's, we pick the business parks and the industrial parks and the areas where we want to incent development of those projects. So, when you pick an urban renewal area for an LMI project, you can do it with more than one property. You could put the property we, that somebody's waiting to do it in. But you might do it in other areas where you think they should do it. So, you could say, well, if, if somebody over, but this, has this property over here, we want to do that in that area too, so we can actually put them in the plan, so that they could actually do an LMI project in another area. It's just identifying those areas where you want to put LMI projects and finding people who are willing to do it. Cause you, you don't really want to put one in an area, or put an area, a property in an area that the person doesn't want to do it, because you just wasted the time and effort of putting them in that area. And LMI is a pretty specific thing. You know, low to moderate income has very, is very restrictive. And so, your urban renewal area has restrictions, just like the, the programs that you're, you know, the Iowa Finance Authority program that they are going to submit their application under. So, they're very restricted when they get that money or when they're applying for that money. You know, they forego a lot of, of the ability to charge rents that they want to charge. They're charging the rents that they have to charge by the law in order to get that money, to get that grant money. And that would be the same thing under urban renewal. We'd say, you don't qualify for that urban renewal unless you're an LMI project that qualifies. And so, that's why we put them in the area in order to generate, to capture some of that tax they're paying in on the new project, to give back some smaller percentage of it as an incentive. I, I know it's complicated, because then we start talking about a whole new plan. I mean, a whole new incentive program that Iowa, Iowa Finance Authority program. You know, I'm, I, this is one that applies across, not just LMI, it's market rate, it's, it, it's not looking at that purpose of the, of the project, but you can use it for that. So, we could use the rebate to give them the forty-eight thousand dollars back. We could use that instead of urban renewal, if we, if we could get enough increment or enough tax savings, abatement.
And, Tim, are you suggesting that we only use our own devised rebate program, our own designed rebate program and not take advantage of any of these, uh, other state, uh, I mean, yeah, any of these other programs that would require us to go through the state? I mean, it seems like we would be, if we do what you're suggesting for, and have it be exactly the same for everybody, then we would be eliminating the, we would have to design our own rebate program with appropriate spaces and, and percentage rebates and all of that, and we could certainly do that. But are you suggesting that that's all we do in the name of consistency? And then we'd lose the flexibility of taking advantage of some other opportunities?
No, I, people can go for any of these state programs, the IFA, IDA, if there's another CDBG block that comes through or anything like that. They're, they're welcome to go with that. My point with that is whatever match that the city would have to do for them, to me, should be done in the form of rebatements, not in the form of any kind of abatement or any upfront type of, of payment. That, to me, is, is the kind of incentivizing that I'm not comfortable with. The, the rebatement, to me, is, isn't as much of an, you know, it's an incentive without, you know, there's no incentive to cheat on it, uh, from a developer standpoint, simply because they have to pay the taxes in before they get anything back. So, you know, if they're going to try to, you know, lower the cost of their, their raised taxes, it's going to take them longer to recover what the agreed rebatement is going to be, because they're not going to be paying as much as taxes over so many years. That's, you know, that's the consistency part that I'm, I'm looking at in far as being able to tell people. Now, if they go and get an IFA grant that says, you know, you have to have X amount of, of development, part of that IFA grant is going to, is going to say, you've got to do so much development to get this much back. Versus somebody wants to redo their apartments, their, their complex and redo the windows and some of the, the wiring and, and, you know, maybe add Wi-Fi or something else in there that's going to cost them, you know, I don't know how much one of those would cost, but X amount that they could get a portion of that back in the form of rebatements. That's, again, that's what I would be comfortable doing. And that's the consistent point with that, as opposed to, you know, cause you're not talking in, in the hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand, a million-dollar range for some of these. It's, it's going to be in the twenty-five, fifty, hundred thousand dollar range, and they're only going to get, you know, ten percent of it back.
But to pay rebates, we have to have a legal way to capture the increment. We, we can't, we can say, we'll give them an amount equal to the, the taxes that they've, additional taxes that they've paid. But in order to fund that repayment back to them, we have to be able to capture the, the taxes from the asset, from the county that, when they're paid in. That's what urban renewal does. We capture the tax, and the state allows us to capture that money, so that then we can give it back to them. If we don't have a program that qualifies under urban renewal or revitalization for abatement, we don't have anything to capture. We can't, we can't intercept the money as such. I mean, the TIF requires, you know, an urban renewal plan, we have to have one to capture it, to give back. So, in order to give, and, and we've thrown out the number, three hundred thousand dollars to Bremer Court, we have to have a mechanism to capture their tax increment. And that, that the increment, or that, what we were going to use is an urban renewal plan area, just like we do for the business parks, where we capture the, 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 the money, the tax increment, and then we give part of it back. And part of it stays with the city. We can't do that by capturing, we can't use the states, we can't use the property taxes to do that unless we have a plan in place that the state recognizes. So, the rebatement requires a plan, so does the abatement requires a plan. Or we have to just fund it out of our general fund or other sources of, of, of money.
I'm with you, yeah, you know, talking about the no-upfront money. But abatement versus rebatement doesn't bother me, I guess.
And you're saying we would not.
No-upfront money, I agree with you with. Whether it's an abatement or rebatement, I, I don't see that as a big deal.
Maybe I'm starting to understand Tim a little bit more. I guess I'm looking at, at the urban revitalization as a standalone. And I would be willing to support language in there that says it cannot be used as a companion to IFA or something else. That should be addressed, as Tim's saying, is develop it, make sure it's real, pay your dues, and then we'll give you a rebatement on the back end of it. I think maybe it's two different programs or two different ways to approach development, where you can't piggyback some other outside fund. To me, this isn't meant to be the community's share in anything, where Bremer Court, we've been asked. been asked to help support an application to some other funding source. Show me your local participation. To me, those should be dealt with differently, as Tim's alluding to, do it as a rebate on the back end versus upfront money, or just-
The only problem with that-
I don't want to put words in Tim's mouth either, but-
The only problem with that, Dan, is that if we, so if you have forty-eight thousand dollars that you're required, that you've pledged to Bremer Court project, you have to have some funding source in order to give that back to them.
Well, I'm not saying we would.
This can be used for that, though.
It could, but I'm suggesting maybe it's different, and, you know, maybe the way we're handling Bremer Court is the appropriate way to do it if we're a local match to some other funding source.
Except that if you, if you say it's separate and they can't, we might commit to do both. I mean, but they both count, the same forty-eight thousand dollars counts. So if they get forty-eight thousand dollars from the tax, or the urban revitalization tax abatement, that counts as your forty-eight thousand dollar contribution to the project. You don't have to do it twice. Yeah, I mean, it's just a funding mechanism. It's a way to fund the money you pledge for incentives. We've got to find it, we have to get that money from somewhere. And one of the ways we can do it is through abatement. Another way we can do it is through urban renewal and tax rebatement. And we can do it through other grants and things that you apply for, through state or federal organizations where you can get money and to provide incentives. But those are the two ways of doing this, this incentive for that project. And then this is more broad than that, because this allows you to do it for everybody who's in the area, regardless of whether they qualify as an LMI or don't qualify.
But am I understanding correctly, there is a third alternative, which would be to totally design our own rebatement program, which is what Tim was talking about?
But you cannot do that unless, because you can't get the funds-
So you would be, so what you would be rebating, rebating would have to come out of the general-
General fund, right. Because, or the-
Because you're not capturing-
Or the Economic Development Fund that you've accumulated, but-
But not-
But TIF money wouldn't be appropriate, because you can't spend TIF money in an area that's not in TIF.
So those taxes that Tim was talking about collecting and giving back in a rebatement program, if we designed our own, the third alternative, so to speak, that would not be possible, because there wouldn't-
We can't capture those-
We can't capture the taxes. We would have to pay that out of something else.
We can't capture the taxes out of that fund. You know, you can, you can, I've seen communities allocate a certain sum of money to be used for certain programs. They say, we're just going to allocate in our budget, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and it's going to go towards this program that we've set up on our own. And they just take the money from that program, or from that fund that came out of the general fund, in order to provide those program benefits. If we want to capture the increment paid by the project, we have to do it in a way that the state recognizes so that we can-
The first two alternatives.
Yeah, and right now, there's these two alternatives, right? Urban renewal and urban revitalization.
Before I lose one more comment, Tim was, I think, kind of alluded to maybe getting to the end of the abatement period, and people realize that they overpriced themselves into property, those type of things. I have talked to a few other communities that have used just on residential, I want to be clear here, a rebatement process on residential. They found that after their rebatement period is over, young families bought into too expensive of a house, now all of a sudden they have people having to move out because they can't afford it and those type of things. So that's one reason I've always kind of hesitated, looking at incentivizing residential, because I think it's more likely that somebody's going to, okay, I'm going to get rebated five thousand a year, that means I have five thousand more to spend on my house, oops, three years down the road, now I've got to come up with that five thousand.
Single-family residential.
Single-family.
Yeah, that's why, and actually, I don't think we have a problem building single-family homes if we have the lots. I think something like this would help, you know, once people get out of the floodplain, they're going to want to maybe do some things anyway, and this would help them do a little more.
It's limited to seventy-five thousand dollars per unit, so if you're building a new house, you'd only give seventy-five percent, or seventy-five thousand dollars of that value if you build a new one, if you were in the area. So if we covered an area that had open land and you build a house, you could get, you could use this on seventy-five thousand dollars.
And I think you want, I mean, you want to capture the entire, you want to capture the entire increment, otherwise you have only a much smaller piece to even pay back. It might not be worth it, right? I mean, wouldn't that be the case?
Well, we only, we can't recapture, I mean, we can't do more than seventy-five thousand under the rebate.
Right, also, okay. But it would be longer, yeah, if, but if we can only, yeah, pay back, you know, forty percent of the increment, it would be over-
Well, I said seven thousand, I calculated seven thousand dollars tax savings on seventy-five thousand dollar value added, so that's like the max. So if you're only doing forty percent of that, it's only twenty-eight hundred, uh-
Right, you know, and it's probably, like you said, you know, not as good a value for remodeling, but if it's something that people are going to do anyway, I mean-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's an incentive.
Give them a little extra push.
It's eight, nine percent of their cost.
Yeah, absolutely.
Abated back.
Maybe if we all kind of take a breath here and wrap it up, and each of us kind of digest everybody's thoughts here, and any coaching you'd give to the city staff, to Bill and everyone, maybe we just start with Dan, and then I'll move to this side.
I think this is a great discussion tonight, and I see this as a very valuable tool. I would encourage Bill to continue to work with Economic Development on identifying areas to maybe apply it to. Hopefully, this group will give him some feedback. Do they like the three-year, a hundred percent rebatement? Do they like the sliding scale over seven, ten, fifteen years, those type of things? Do we want to include residential, single-family, don't we? Those type of things, so that he can put together a draft of something for us to look at and-
Thank you. That was good. Edith?
I'm interested in continuing to explore this further, too. I would also be interested in hearing from the Economic Development Commission about the strategy. I mean, I think, whatever we're calling it, housing strategy, or area strategy, or, and maybe, maybe input from planning and zoning would be useful as well. I would also be interested in hearing more about the commissions and your recommendations about commercial. I'm not so interested, I don't, I don't see as great a need or incentive for single-family residential, but seems like there might be some value looking at commercial also. And I wonder about the area, because I can think of some commercial that would not fall into, but that needs some, needs some help, and maybe some incentivizing for doing something different with some, some commercial buildings. So, yeah, generally supportive, but I think expand it to commercial, at least more information on commercial and recommendations from the Economic Development Commission for the placement, so to speak.
Chris?
Yeah, I kind of echo the same things, and you know, I'd be interested here if you guys ever get in touch with Grinnell, and maybe some other towns that have done this, to see their, like you said, get some insight from some other communities our size.
Well, Tim, you want to wrap it?
Oh, I've kind of, kind of said my things, I think. The other comment on there, as far as the eminent domain, I'd wonder if there's a way to write that in, that it would not be permissible to use that in any way, just kind of-
I mean, there's no authority for it in that chapter at all, so it's, I don't know where it came from, really. Four oh three is a different, I don't, I don't, I know I'm generally aware of four oh three, and I think there may be some ways to use four oh three, but, I mean, I'm focusing on four oh four.
Yeah, I would be afraid, Tim, of raising it, and then people come to the wrong conclusion that, you know, we're raising it because it is a possibility, you know, and-
It has been raised by people.
It has been raised, and a statement that says that belongs to four oh three, not-
Yeah, either way.
Yeah.
We can, I mean, there's some things you can do in the intent and findings. I mean, there's, there's sections that you can explain your plan, and for, and that's a lot of times for your community, you explain why you did things, why you put certain areas in, you could explain what you're relying on, what feedback you got.
There's, there's things that, you know, I'm not as, as comfortable, some of the, you know, the idea of just ending it whenever we feel like it, or things like that, that just, to me, seems, yes, I realize that's within our purview to do that with a lot of things, but it also seems like we're being wishy-washy when we're passing it to say, well, we're going to start this program, but we can cancel it at any time, well, you know, what kind of message is that really sending to anybody, to say?
Get in early, get in often.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather have it, we're going to do this for five years, and we'll review it after five years, something that would be more that kind of a statement, as opposed to, we have the ability to cancel it at any time. Yeah, we do, because we can always change the law at any time, and so-
And usually, usually, they don't, they don't really just write that in, because that's the law, provides that anyway. You just set it for three years, or five years, or whatever years you want to set it for.
I think some of the community's documentation I've seen out there has a question and answer type thing, and maybe that's where the eminent domain could be addressed, and some of these other things, because there's an application form, a question and answer, the actual, whatever we pass is out there for them to read, and that type of thing, so.
Is that enough, Mr. Worker?
That's good direction. I probably plan on talking with the commission about asking maybe three members to work with me, because you really can't do it in one meeting a month for an hour. And then I might ask for one or two, or maybe three, from the planning and zoning to help with that, and just maybe have a four-hour session, five-hour session, and we can sit and hash out a bunch of things with that group, and then take it back to the commission to review their findings.
Very good. We have reports from the Airport Commission, we have minutes from May fourteenth. Any comments on the Airport Commission minutes? Officially received. Staff comments, anything that you have between you and Phil?
Nothing at all.
Mayor, I would just like to remind council that administration is still needing names for a committee for financing any committees or outside nonprofit agencies that are going to be asking for money in the next budget. I'm still needing a couple of names from each member, so we can get that put together.
On that topic, is that a, I know we had talked during budgeting of doing that and/or just allocating money to United Way, since they already have the infrastructure to do that. I don't recall us making a definitive decision either way. I guess I've got some reservations about setting up a whole nother committee within, under the preview of this group.
Is that what we said we were going to do?
I was going to say, yeah, at budget time, I believe that, at least Phil and I and Valerie, we all understood that the committee was going to be formed, and then the committee could decide if it was going to go to United Way, or how it would be dispersed, and then recommend to the council.
I don't remember that. My recollection, we talked about both.
Well, it had to do with when everybody was coming forward, right, and so we were saying we need some guidelines for this.
Might be a good study session topic.
Yeah. How fast do we need to move?
Well, we want, originally, we wanted to get this group together in July, and so that they could bring a recommendation back to council by September.
Probably be good to have something even, yeah, by September, October, so that any agencies looking for money would know, October, November, December, what they would be able to ask, or who they, who they would be directing requests towards.
So do we really need a separate committee, or could it be a study session, like Chris or whoever just now suggested that, and then we come to some consensus on that?
We were going to scratch August and September last week, so we still got options there.
Yeah, it's going to be tough, we'll have vacations, but it's, I mean, the idea's right. We could have a study session and just make it happen.
It shouldn't take that long, should it?
Whoever can be here will have to make it happen.
Because you're going to want feedback from all of the agencies, I would presume.
Could it, do you know the agenda for next council meeting, first of July, the sixth?
Again, I just, from working with United Way for six years, I can, I just know how much time and effort the agencies put into filling out an application, coming and making their presentation, and they have to do that multiple times a year. I would just hesitate to add us to that list, when we've got such a good organization in the community that already does that.
Why didn't we, or did we talk about that at that time, too?
That was my suggestion when we went through the budgeting process.
Not all of them go through United Way, so.
But they could?
Not necessarily. I mean, we gave money last week, authorized money last week for Heritage Days, and-
Which was in budget.
Which was in the budget, but, you know, if we're talking about how we're going to allocate that kind of funds, they would probably, that would fall into that same kind of a category for discretionary, you know.
So perhaps, I mean, could we have United Way and those that don't, aren't eligible for United Way and have a different process?
Again, I guess my recollection was, we were talking human services-related requests, where heritage would be more of a community request, so I could see that coming to us the way it does now, but human service-
Right.
What would you think about doing a discussion item for the next council meeting? It'd be nice to pick up our three missing people.
It would all depend on what else is on the agenda in July, on the first one of July.
Right, see, that's why I was fishing here, I haven't seen it.
I can pull it up, but I don't want to take the time of council.
I don't remember, I mean, there's a, I don't know what's on there. Val was working on it now.
Yeah, I mean, I can't remember all of the items.
I had one discussion on it, I know we were talking about it being fairly-
Could I encourage council to just email me with their thoughts, and then maybe we could put a discussion, but we'd have all of those thoughts ahead of time?
Okay, so possibility, we feed to Carla all of our thoughts. If it crescendos into a discussion item at the next meeting, fine, or whatever, we can let the staff kind of come from the, take the best shot at it, from feedback from the council people.
And it's possible to go on the second meeting of July, too. I don't see why it would have to be the first meeting.
Okay.
Just as a suggestion.
Yeah, I'm just thinking ahead, we've got the bridge report coming in, probably that second meeting, and then the study session where we're going to vote on the bridge, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's a, that's a plan. We're still on staff comments? Were you done? I can't even remember where we're at.
We're staff comments.
We're still on staff, so, yeah, okay. Well, let's go in the same order for council comments. Go ahead, Dan.
I'll allow you to make some comments on the weekend's activities, and-
I'm more than willing to, but anybody's welcome on the weekend, that was some of that, so.
Job well done by all, but I'll let you make the final comments there.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Chris?
I was just going to ask Mike a little bit on any, people have limbs down, is there, do we do any curbside pickup for some of the larger limbs, or limbs in general, or is it all your own?
Take it to the curb side.
Take them to the curb side, and city crew will be coming around. We had a few big, big trees or big limbs down, I noticed one of the, the gates right by Councilman Gade's home, the blocks, the dry run got crushed by a pretty good-sized limb there, proportion of the tree.
Big tree in Bremer by LSI, went down the whole tree.
Yeah, it'll take a while to, you know, probably the rest of the week, to really kind of get, not only the streets, but the park system as well cleaned up, and I'm not sure what kind of condition the rail trails in, so it's going to be really kind of a week-long process here. People can certainly help us out by getting the downed branches curbside, if they've got some bigger stuff, again, curbside, if they call, that can be very helpful to let us know where it's at, you know, because sometimes it might be more than just something that people can, can do by hand, and they may have to get some larger equipment out there as well. So that, again, that'd be helpful if they were to call in. Otherwise, get a curbside, and we'll be making rounds throughout the week.
And I heard a report just on the radar today that they're looking at a flood stage in Cedar Falls, but we're not getting anything here that's, it's far enough on other tributaries going into, feeding into-
You know, we're, we're good. Remember two thousand, May of two thousand thirteen, every county up and down the Cedar River was, received a flood disaster declaration except Bremer County. And that's because of the inflatable dam, so you hear Charles City, maybe even hear Janesville, but, you know, we're, we can- tolerate an awful lot of water in the Cedar River before we have any significant concerns. Yes, there may be some water into like Brookwood Park, some of the lower line areas like South Riverside, but as far as infrastructure and the public's concerned, we're going to be in good shape, so far.
All right.
Final word on, obviously, as successful event as you'll ever dream you can ever have, but I'd like to get specific a little bit. First, I would like to thank the people of Waverly. We were so geared up and everybody had the, we had this feeling level, but this comes from the, just everyone wanting to put their best foot forward and welcome everyone. The comments about the people of Waverly was, was unending, and I almost roamed everywhere constantly, tried to be by myself so I could just talk to people, get the pulse, and so the, the, the kudos go to everyone who lives here who just knows how to welcome. We do it with families, we do it with friends, but we also do it as a city, and we did extremely well. Kudos also go to the city manager, who just worked tirelessly, coordinated everything, was everywhere, he's part of the coordinating process. Everybody is falling in love with the city through our city manager, he gets kudos. The city crews, my goodness, the city crews coordinated everything almost to perfection. Everybody reacted whenever there was a need, that would include the Waverly utilities, they reacted. Power needed at the last moment on the downtown, right there, became a non-problem. Everything became a non-problem because our city just took care of streets, they took care of mud holes after the rain. It was just a, just a marvelous, uh, uh, city effort. So all of our crews and departments get a whole lot of credit. We all know that the chamber was at the center of a lot of this and, and, and they just did fantastic. They were improvising on the hotel at the very last, putting up these banners and the fire truck, I don't know if you were in on that day, I just thought it was fantastic. It's like the final touch, but it was creativity, just doing it on the, on the fly of just what can happen, it just, as inspiration takes over. So the chamber did a phenomenal job, Workburg College is going to be the huge winner. They just hosted like crazy, they coordinated, they did a lot, some of the communications with the radio stations, and when we had bad weather, they were coming up with all the plans. The W was there for over two thousand people who felt maybe they better be more secure than that little pup, pup, pup tent would allow, so, but Workburg gets a huge, huge credit, they were the center of the wheel. We also had volunteers, and we'd asked for volunteers, we'd gone through United Way and, and, and we had several volunteers, over twenty-five, who just, separate from the people who volunteered just to do, for their tickets. So we're starting something in that arena and that's very, very good. In the end, for me, what happened was the publicity for Waverly because of who we are, because of our wonderful character of, of warmth and, and a little bit charisma maybe at times, just, it's just wonderful to have people come here and say what we see, take for granted a little bit, and they say, yeah, but this is super special. And, and so we are, we're getting a, a feedback of that Waverly is a very special town. We knew it, now more people know it. And I think for getting this publicity, we have a chance to become the next level up of a destination town that people will think about for coming for shopping, will come for restaurants, will just come to be part of our community when we do events and all over in our parks at Workburg College. So all in all, it was just a tremendous effort. It's always landmine, the weather had to cooperate, there was some luck because the clouds parted at between three and twelve when we really needed them to part. And so Waverly, it's time to smile, it's time to feel good, and it's time to close the meeting.
We adjourn.
Second, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.